Good evening, everyone. It's 7:03. I'd like to open this meeting of the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission for Thursday, January 21st. This is a public meeting. It's being held in pursuit of the Governor Baker's letter of March 12th. We'll take a roll call and then prior to the meeting, I'll have to read the board members in attendance for folks that don't have visual, just calling it on the phone. So I'd like to ask the clerk to take a roll call if we could.
Kyle, I just want to make a note that we are recording the meeting and the delegate is here today as well.
Yes, yes, it will be. I don't think it's streaming live, but I know it'll be televised at a later date and also through multiple outlets, I understand, besides just Pittsfield. Perhaps North Carolina will have a copy of it as well. Welcome all.
Adams. Alfred. Brackitt.
Al Blake here.
Tresscher.
Trub, delegate.
Thank you. Clarksburg. Dalton.
Zach McCain, delegate.
Egremont. Florida. Great Barrington.
Pedro Pachano, delegate.
Malcolm Fick, alternate.
Hancock. Hinsdale.
Jim Sullivan, delegate.
Lanesboro.
Herb Davis Hassan, delegate.
Lee.
Chuck Donovan, delegate.
Lennox.
Lauren Franzone, delegate.
Monterey. Mount Washington.
Okay.
New Ashford. New Bar, Marlborough. North Adams.
Hanlon, delegate.
Otis. Peru. Pittsfield. Irvin. Richmond.
Fred Schubert, alternate.
Sandersfield. Savoy. Sheffield.
Nate Wood.
Delegate, alternate.
Stockbridge.
Nancy Socia, delegate.
Tieringham. Washington. West Stockbridge. Williamstown.
Roger Bolton, alternate.
Thank you. Windsor.
Doug McNally, alternate.
Thank you. And that is the roll.
Okay. Tom, is your interpretation, does that count as a reading of the members or should I be do a formal read off just prior to getting going here?
No, I think that that counts. We have the name and the town they were representing.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Next item up, I'll look for a motion to bring to the floor approval of the minutes from the November 19th, 2020 meeting.
Irvin, so moved.
Pachano, second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Discussion? Excellent. As always, we're going to do a roll call vote. Alvin Blake?
Here. Yes.
Thank you. Peter Trub?
Yes.
Zach McCain?
Aye.
Pedro Pachano?
Aye.
Jim Sullivan?
Aye.
Barbara Davis Hassan?
Herb Davis Hassan says aye.
Barb Davis Hassan, thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck Donovan?
Abstain.
Lauren Franzone?
Aye.
Kyle Hanlon, yes. Sheila Irvin?
Yes.
Fred Schubert?
Yes.
Kenneth Smith?
Yes.
Nancy Socia?
Muted.
I didn't attend, but I abstained.
Thank you. Roger Bolton?
Aye.
Ian Douglas McNally?
Doug, you're muted.
Abstain.
Okay, next item on the agenda is comments from the public, but prior to that, we'd like to introduce a new staff member for BRPC, Tom?
Yes, what I'd like to do is introduce Kate Hilltopia, who is joining us on the administrative program. She'll be starting, I think the 27th is her start date. This is a position that was somewhat formally held by Susan Nowazowski, but this is a, it's a little bit of a different position and it's got a little more responsibility and will help with me and Mary Ann and the other administrative staff and overall office administration. I think we're very eager to get Kate started, especially, you know, trying to work remotely. There's a lot of things that we want to accomplish. So she'll be, you know, you know, working with the commission and the executive committee. So you'll be seeing a fair amount of her. Like to welcome her on board, Kate.
Thanks. Looking forward to working with all of you.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Welcome. Appreciate it.
I'm just checking one thing before we move ahead here. Okay. Comments from the public? Anyone in the public like to make some comments this evening? Jane Nguyen, I see has her hand raised and welcome. How do I light it up again?
Thank you for taking public comment to start with. I'm Jane Nguyen with Berkshire Environmental Action Team, and I'd like to talk specifically about some of the challenges and issues related to housing in the Berkshires. We believe that any housing strategy should focus on making sure that all housing is energy efficient. The cleanest, least expensive energy is the energy that we do not use. All new construction should be built to zero net energy standards, and in most parts of the state, this adds little cost to the cost of the building, but saves lots of money on energy for the entire life of the building. Going with energy efficiency is particularly important for poor people who spend a disproportionate amount of their income on energy. While there are some excellent landlords out there who have upgraded the efficiency of apartments or homes that they rent out, passing on some of or much of the savings to their tenants. I've spoken with other landlords and property managers who see no benefit to having, taking energy efficiency steps in their buildings, despite my pointing out that it would leave more money for their tenants to be able to pay their rent, or that would improve the comfort and value of their properties. We need a mechanism to force these landlords to upgrade the energy efficiency of their properties, which can usually be done at little or even no cost to the property owner or tenant. It's shameful that these property owners do not take advantage of these offerings that would improve the lives of our friends and neighbors immediately, as well as to help fight the climate crisis by decreasing the demand for dirty, polluting fossil fuels. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public? Thank you for that. Delegate and alternate issues. Any delegates or alternates have something to bring to the floor this evening?
Yes, Kyle, I, this is a technical matter, but my understanding of the rules is that you were supposed to list all the people attending the meeting, including people who are not alternates and delegates. Now, I happen to think that requirement is wrong, but I, my understanding is that that is a requirement. Maybe Tom can clarify for us.
That is not my understanding, Roger. You do not have to list everyone. I think, and with other public meetings, what we've done, if people want to be formally added on as a guest on the record, they can announce themselves and, you know, that's an option, but it's not a requirement to identify the members of the public that are here.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
But we will note in the minutes that, for instance, Jane Nguyen was here and that there are other, you know, staff people.
Right.
Can I answer this question through the chair?
Of course.
When it's, when the other party's done, when Roger's done? Yeah, being new to the meetings, I wanted to listen and watch and observe for a while before asking a question, and this might seem minor, but is there any reason why we meet so late in the evening versus other time slots available? I found myself sharing a lot of meetings and going to a lot of meetings on Zoom calls and most of the members, like, we've been meeting at 5:15, 5:30. Have there ever been a question as to moving the time slot up a little bit?
We have, we have raised that at a few full commission meetings. Most of it is when we were meeting in person, of course, it was a time-related issue for some of the outlying areas to finish up a workday and have adequate time to get to the meeting. Now, whether we want to change that going forward because we're on a, you know, an internet platform, I don't know. Tom, do you have any thoughts on that?
I think it's all up to you, really. I mean, I think that's, you're right, Kyle. The reason we were meeting so late was, you know, people had a hard time getting to an earlier meeting if, if they had to travel to Pittsfield. Because we're not traveling, I think it's really all up to you if you want to meet earlier.
Well, and I recall having the conversation at least two meetings since I've been here, and I think I'm, but I've been around eight or 10 years, I guess now. So it has come up and it's never been changed. We certainly can add it to discussion and bring it to a vote at the next meeting and see where everybody stands. It's, again, it's a commission, so let's just get it out on the floor, get it out of the agenda for next meeting, get it posted and get everybody's input.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Do you have a suggestion, Tom? Well, let me, before I say that, for myself, coming from Pittsfield to do this at home, and I get out at five o'clock, I'd be looking at six o'clock would be the earliest I could make it, so.
That, to me, would be a heck of a lot better than seven.
Okay, and I don't want to influence the board, the commission, by my one, you know, my one person needs, but that would be my presentation at the next meeting, so.
Well, this is, this is, I, you know, like from Windsor, I think that you might want to do kind of a doodle poll or something, because as the previous speaker said, we are all doing a lot of Zoom meetings. I know that, that the four to six slot is very popular and some of us are on multiple boards, so you might want to make sure that you're not creating conflicts.
Also, some of us are essential workers that are working right up until dark and it would, it's hard enough now for me to make these Zoom meetings because I'm working. Sure. Well, we'll get it on the agenda. We can't really do it by doodle poll. We have to do it in an open meeting, so we'll get it on the agenda.
But Kyle, I can do a doodle poll and see if there's a preference for people and then we can make the decision. Actually.
We still have to bring it to the floor for a vote next meeting.
Well, Kyle, you're the chair. You can actually set when you want the meeting to happen.
Okay, well, then we'll do the doodle poll and we'll have open discussion next meeting and figure it out.
Okay.
Kyle, when you have Tom send that memo out, could, could that memo please include that we meet six times a year and we don't meet in the summer? So this isn't a plethora of meetings. And I am concerned, but you'll find out in the doodle poll, about precluding people from joining this by a time change, but you'll find that out.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your input. Anybody else have anything to add to this discussion before we move along?
This is Al Blake. I have a non-related question pertaining to James. I am also a part of an organization of creating a flyer to go out to our membership promoting energy audits and alternate ways of having them besides going through the state, which makes it a lot easier. And I was wondering if our, this organization would be interested and if so, who I should contact?
I would, I would start with Tom.
Yeah, okay. Maybe we should talk a little bit more. I'm not fully, I'm not fully understanding what you're asking.
Well, the company called this now promoting energy audits, which, and there's another organization, so all we're doing is trying to put out information to all of the residents that they can get their audits in variety of ways.
Yeah, I mean, what we can do is, we can put it, something in our newsletter.
Right. Well, when I, we have a draft, then I'll send it to you, Tom. Thanks.
Great.
Thank you. Any other alternate or delegate issues? Great. Moving on, we'll take a, have a discussion about executive committee action from two meetings, December 3rd, January 7th. The summary was in the packet. Any questions or comments? Okay, next item. Amendments to the Zoning and Enabling Act in the Economic Development Bill. We're going to get a quick review of this. Tom, who's presenting for this?
That's me. This is going to be Phil, our community planner, and.
Phil, good to see you.
Good to see you. I've got to make sure that I allow him to share his screen. I think I have permission. You do? Okay, go for it then. Right. Everybody see that?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
All right. You're not in slideshow view though. There you go.
Yep.
Is there a way to get this column of people's faces out of here? Do we do it ourselves? I think I answered my own question.
Did you get them out?
Um. You can click on the boundary between Phil's screen and the column. Hold it down and move to the right. That's what you can do in my computer. It's a Mac.
I got it now where I, where I need it. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Hi, everyone. Again, my name is Phil Arnold and I work as a community planner for VRPC. Tonight, I'm going to be giving a brief presentation about some recent amendments to mass general law, specifically the chapter on zoning. So first, a little background information. On January 6th of this year, legislators approved the conference report to advance a comprehensive economic development, housing assistance, and pandemic relief bill to the governor's desk. This bill will support small businesses, promote affordable and equitable housing opportunities, and especially to those most disproportionately impacted by COVID-19, will provide additional tenant protections all across the Commonwealth. The bill was signed by Governor Baker on January 15th and immediately went into effect. A copy of the bill can be found online at malegislature.gov and a summary of the zoning amendments can be found on VRPC's website. And I can return back to this slide later if anybody needs to scribble those down. The Massachusetts Association of Community Development Corporations developed this list of topics that they thought would be of particular interest to planners. The bill is very expansive, but all of these selected topics relate to housing and housing development, and you'll notice the first two bullets regard zoning amendments. So the remainder of the presentation is just going to cover the amendments made to Chapter 40A, which is specific to zoning, and I'm just going to go through them in numerical order, beginning with Section 1A, which is on definitions. The existing definitions were actually very limited. In fact, there are only eight definitions total, which is far fewer than what you would typically see at the municipal level. This section has been amended to include the definitions of the following: accessory dwelling unit as of right, eligible locations, gross density, lot, MBTA community, mixed-use development, multifamily housing, natural resource protection zoning, and open space residential development. The only change to the existing definitions was a very minor language change that we can see on this slide. Now, instead of eight total definitions, there are 18, and since the changes are so recent, they have not yet been updated on the digital version of MGL. So again, the best way to see them would be referencing those links that I had in that earlier slide. The addition of Section 3A is entirely new and it regards MBTA communities. MBTA is short for Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority, which services greater Boston. Because of the service territory, this does not apply to Berkshire County, because there are no MBTA communities here. But for the purpose of reviewing the amendments, I've included it anyway, and it is basically trying to make transit more equitable and more accessible by requiring areas where multifamily housing is permitted, they have to be serviced by MBTA. So Section 3A is going to provide a lot more detail on that, but again, does not apply to Berkshire County. Section 5 regards adoption or change of ordinances or bylaws. The notable change here is that allowing the uses in this slide by right can now be adopted by a simple majority vote of either town or city council, or a simple majority vote at town meeting. So the previous regulations specified the process, but did not specify different regulations for these particular uses. Similarly, this slide shows the uses allowed by special permit, which would be adopted by a simple majority vote of either town or city council, or again, simple majority vote at town meeting. So it's essentially the same as the last slide, except these uses are allowed by special permit rather than by right. Aside from the uses allowed by right or by special permit, the new amendments to Section 5 would allow the adoption of a bylaw or ordinance by a simple majority vote with the additional provisions listed on this slide. I just want to note that this is an abridged list and the new amendments are much more detailed than what I have on this slide, but this gives just a quick snapshot of it.
Are those by a town meeting vote or planning board majority, simple majority?
This would be either simple majority. It should be the same as the last one, so it would be by town council or city council or at town meeting.
Thank you.
Sure. Section 9 regards special permits. Amendments include some language changes such as replacing the word cluster with open space residential based upon the new definitions that we outlined earlier. And there are more substantial language changes, but there, a lot of them are pretty lengthy, so too long to recite here. Open space residential developments can be allowed by right without the need for a special permit, and special permits may be granted for reduced parking space requirements if the permit granting authority finds the public good would be served by the reduction in parking. The special permit granting authority shall require a simple majority vote for multifamily housing, mixed-use development, and reduced parking spaces. Again, just note that this is an abridged version. The new regulation is very lengthy, but you can reference Section 9 for all those details. And the only amendment to Section 17 which regards judicial review is the insertion of this new paragraph. The main difference in this amendment is that the previous regulation did not have this dollar sound that you see. There wasn't any provision like that before, so I don't think that I can explain this better than it's written here, so I'm just going to pause for a quick moment and let you all just read the paragraph. Okay, and that concludes the presentation. I will try to answer questions as best I can, but I'm admittedly still in the learning phases of this since the bill was just approved. The main takeaway is that some zoning laws have been changed and VRPC will be available as a resource to municipalities which need assistance as related to the topics that I covered tonight. And again, I've included that link to VRP's website that has a nice summary of the amendments to zoning.
Phil, this is Malcolm Fick from Great Barrington. I have a question. Are these changes automatic? Or, I mean, or does the town have to do something to enable these changes for the town? In other words, do we have to pass something at a meeting that says from now on for these things, we require
My understanding was that as soon as it's signed, it goes into effect. This, this is just going to change a few processes going forward, but to my understanding, you wouldn't have to do anything at the municipal level to, to enact any of these changes.
So at the next town meeting, we, if it qualifies, we could pass some of these bylaw changes with a simple majority instead of a two-thirds?
Correct. I think the intention was to make some of these housing-related issues a little bit easier to, to get going through town meeting.
This is Doug McNally from Windsor. It seems that what they're doing is pushing the governor's agenda to promote affordable housing and multifamily housing. Is that the take of others?
Seems, it seems transparently so, yes.
It definitely is, Doug. I mean, this is part of the governor's agenda on housing. He wants to make housing development easier, and it's mostly aimed at the eastern part of the state where there is a shortage of, of housing, and housing affordability is a big deal. And so it really is to, you know, allow some of these multifamily bylaws to be adopted by a simple majority rather than a two-thirds vote. So you're right.
Phil?
This is Fred Schubert from Richmond, small town. Does this impact on our ability to push affordable housing forward in a town like Richmond?
It should enable it, yes. It should make it easier, Fred.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if we need the slide up anymore. Maybe if we can see if you can, you know, stop sharing.
Okay.
I think I heard somebody else was, Renee, were you trying to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to see, I was just going to email. So whether there was any mention of tiny houses, as we think of a tiny house that we've been discussing so much?
In what I read, I didn't see any, anything specific to a tiny house.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Are provisions related to accessory?
Yeah.
Accessory dwellings.
That doesn't change, I imagine that doesn't change the dimensional requirement of what you have to have in a building.
No, this does not change the building code.
Any other questions for Phil? Hearing none. Thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Well, I think as we get a little bit more familiar with this, you know, we may be able to do a little bit more work or get some more guidance out. But as Phil said, it was just, you know, passed, you know, a few weeks ago. And there hasn't been a lot of information out that I've seen. I do think, though, that, you know, it's something for you all to consider with town meeting season coming up. You know, really, we're not that far away from it when you start to think about public hearings. If there is any kind of an interest in this, it might be something to consider.
And I would encourage people to click that link on the site. The document that's there, I believe, is only five pages, which is much more digestible than combing through the entire hundred pages of the new bill. So it's, it makes it pretty easy to understand on that document.
Could I just, could I just ask a clarifying question? Is my understanding that changing to the majority from two-thirds, that affects only provisions related to housing, not to business, marijuana, roads, et cetera, et cetera?
No, it was specific to those topics on those slides.
Okay.
Yes, it's very limited. I think for some of you who have been around for a while, you'll know that there's been an effort to change zoning, enabling the zoning enabling act. And rather than go for a comprehensive, you know, rewrite that has been talked about over the decades, the governor has made a decision to try to take small bites at the apple. And it's been his priority, housing has been his stated priority. And so this is the one that he has been working on for several years. I mean, this is not new. I think, you know, if you follow the legislature, you'll know that these bills were in conference committee for many, many months. And then just, you know, literally minutes, and actually after the session was supposed to close, some of these bills got passed. And the economic development bill was one of them. This, these changes, which, you know, are immediate on the zoning, really don't have too much to do with economic development as some of the other provisions in that bill. But it was his way to get this, his priority legislation passed.
Is this a case where they stopped the clock on the wall?
I don't, I don't know, but I know that they ended up the session like at four fifty-three in the morning or something. And after they were, after the last day, you know, because the last day ended at midnight, but they kept going. So I don't know what they did with the clock riser.
I think that's actually happened, maybe not in Massachusetts, but some places.
We could see it here. Kyle, I have one question. Just to help inform the group, and Phil, maybe you're not prepared to answer this. The switch for special permit granting authorities, is that a media of going from super majority to simple majority for housing-related special permits? Is that immediate? Do we know?
My understanding, you know, it was enacted as soon as it was signed. I'm just going back to that slide.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, because I mean, that is something for whoever is doing the special permits for anything that's housing-related needs to be aware of.
Well, it's not anything housing-related. Again, it's, as Tom said, it's, it's pretty limited. So there was only a few bullet points on this slide, so it would be multifamily housing, mixed-use development. And then there's a provision.
But, but what I'm saying is that means for those topics, if the special permit granting authority were dealing with an application under those topics next week, it appears that they are now down to, they need a simple majority rather than a super majority. If I'm following what, you know, I think that's a question that needs to be answered, and it may be one for town councils. But, you know, I think that's something that, that isn't waiting for town meeting. That's, that's right in your face if you happen to have something that's on those lines.
This is Doug from Windsor. Instead of having multiple towns go to town council, can we get one clarification and let us know?
We can do, we can do that research. We'll work with our, our council on that. And, and like I said, Doug, this just came out, and there's going to be a lot of, you know, people studying it and kind of weighing in on it. That's a very good question, Nat. I'll bet, though, you're not the first one who asked that. So because, I mean, it's fairly, it is fairly dramatic. I mean, our permit, special permits that are going to be, you know, coming before various boards on those topics. So we need to know if it's, it's, you know, a simple majority vote or a super majority.
I mean, it could be that some board is unaware of this and thinks this simple, the majority, super majority still applies and denies something and then gets challenged. It, it's important to clarify that.
Yes, you're, you're absolutely right, and we'll work on that as quick as we can.
You're, you're going to try to send out a group notice to all towns ZBA and planning boards through their, through their town managers?
Yeah, again, though, we will do that. Ours will be advisory, because you're really going to take the advice of your own town council. You know, so if there's any kind of challenge, you should really work through your own town council. I can give you an, you know, for educational purposes, but you're really bound to your own town council.
Tom, just to continue with Nate, Nat's comment. I mean, if this is coming, this is coming out of the state, am I correct?
Yeah.
So whoever, I would expect whoever the legislator is that passed this had an intention as to what bodies it was supposed to be addressed to and what its intent was. I'm not sure why we all individually have to reach to our town council if we can't get an interpretation from the author.
Well, like I said, I'll get you an educational interpretation. But with any kind of zoning, you know, discussion or, you know, you really want to find an answer, you should be bound to your own town council, because they're the ones who are going to have to defend you in court if it ever got to court. You know, so.
Okay.
Thank you for the question, Nat. You're looking well.
Thanks.
Good to see you. Any, any other questions?
Can you guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I was having some trouble with my microphone here. So I needed clarification from Phil here, because it sounds like the rest of the commission is talking about votes at zone, at planning board meetings. And I believe that these changes to forty A are for the adoption of policy, not for the voting on special permits themselves. Isn't that correct?
I didn't have any mention of a planning board meeting. This should be, it was for city or town council or at a town meeting.
Right, it's not, so again, it's not on the issuing of a special permit for a specific project. It's for the adoption of zoning ordinances at town meeting or with your permissions, right? It's so, so it's, it's not, it sounds to me like we're having a discussion that was about adopting or voting on special permits.
It's got nothing to do with it.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with it. It's about adopting ordinances.
That clears it up for me. Thank you.
Anything further?
Anything further?
What was the impetus on the adding the fifty thousand dollar bond? Is that going to stifle a Butters from? Or others?
Hopefully.
Well, hearing all their questions, we'll advance to the next agenda item. To stay in compliance with the public announcement of all members present, I'd like to say that Dante Birch, the delegate from the town of Williamson, has joined us this evening.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for letting me be part. Sorry for my tardiness.
No worries. It's good to see you. You're always welcome, whatever time you can get here.
Can I say one thing before we move on, please?
Of course.
Okay, I just wanted, I tried to address this when Renee brought it up, but I was having some technical difficulties. I just wanted, she asked about tiny houses. And I just wanted to mention to her and to the rest of the commission that the next building code will have in it definitions for a tiny house. So it's not, if you don't have, you know, an ordinance in your town for an accessory dwelling unit, that could then be applied to a tiny house, I would recommend that you look into it. But in fact, the twenty eighteen code already has it, but it has not, that will not be adopted in Massachusetts. I believe the twenty twenty-two code is the one that will be adopted here. And it will have in it some language about tiny houses.
Well, that should be very helpful. One would hope.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? And staying with housing, we'll go to regional housing strategy.
And I'm going to handle that, at least initially. And what I, what I really want this is to be more of an open discussion today about various housing issues, concerns that you all have as being out in, you know, in the trenches, so to speak. What we have been hearing and learning is that housing is becoming increasingly a problem in Berkshire County. And for a problem for a number of different ways and a number of different venues. And so we have partnered with one Berkshire on developing a regional housing strategy. We've put together a group of planners and other housing-related people to help guide us on that endeavor. And this document is really intended to be more of a policy-type document. That's why I'm calling it a regional housing strategy to really set the stage if we need some type of legislative fix, or there already is a legislative problem that we need to be corrected, or if we need funding, or if we need another programmatic element from state government, that this document would provide the justification for our, that ask. It would be used to, you know, support our legislators if they were going to be putting in for a budget request or those types of things. So what we've done, and Nat Carnes, for those of you who don't know, the former executive director of BRPC has agreed to take this project on and kind of help shepherd us through. And so what, what we've done so far is we've, and this was in your packet, and would people want me to bring it up on my screen? Or do we want to kind of continue the discussion this way? We've identified a few themes to kind of help frame the, our thinking through this process. So one of the themes that we've heard about is that there really isn't the diversity of quality housing options throughout the region. And, you know, that we don't have the right mix of housing, that we don't have the right mix of apartment units that, you know, that new, new, you know, people to the Berkshires want. We don't have, you know, new units. Some of the units that we do have are way too big. We don't, we don't have the, the family size anymore. So it doesn't seem that we have that right mix. We have a lot of housing. Our housing stock is generally older. We don't have a lot of new development that's been going on. And so that's one of the themes that we're, you know, kind of concentrating on. And so stop me if, if you want to add, you know, some input. I'm just going to quickly go through those themes, and then we can open it up. But, you know, if I see a hand raised, I'll stop for a minute. The other theme that we've been increasingly noticing is that there really isn't a welcoming framework in our lot of, in a lot of our communities for housing development. It seems that the, you know, not in my backyard is becoming more and more of a problem in Berkshire County, especially for, you know, some of the multifamily development, you know, in some of the more settled areas. Along with that, you know, we really need to look through the lens of COVID nineteen. And what, what is that doing in terms of evictions? And where are those folks? What's going to happen with those folks as that, if that continues to get worse? Another theme, and this is maybe where you all come in more, so as, as planners, is there doesn't seem to be what we're calling municipal readiness. And it seems like a lot of towns have put up regulatory barriers for housing development to make it hard to develop in towns. And then also, there doesn't seem to be a lack, it doesn't seem to be the right infrastructure to have the density that you want or the location for housing. And also just generally land availability, you know, what's available for housing in Berkshire County. And then another theme that we're coming up with is the, the development community is not strong in Berkshire County. It doesn't seem to be a lot of well-capitalized, experienced developers. And there doesn't seem to be the correct information to kind of bring to develop, to the developers to, you know, kind of encourage them to do development. And then finally, and I think it's going to be becoming more and more of a problem, is this whole topic of housing insecurity. And this, you know, really gets to the issue of homelessness. And I think we, we saw this particularly in Fitzfield recently with some of the discussions about citing a new homeless, you know, shelter and, and right in the downtown. I think that there needs to be more of a regional approach. There needs to be more education about homelessness being a regional problem. And so with that, now I'm going to shut up for a minute and then try to hear from you all as to what, what your perspectives are on this.
Um, this is Renee. I think one of the things that you've, that you need to add to your list is the whole administration of this process. Sheffield's a small town. We don't want to become a housing authority. We don't want to put the structure in place like some other towns like Stockbridge have, where you have to have the skill set to build it. You have to have the skill set to manage it. And it becomes an ongoing process. We, we're a small town. We struggle to get the stuff done that we have to get done right now. I also think, you know, your, your regional approach, I mean, I wish we had a housing authority like they do in Great Barrington, and yet how long has it taken them to get, get things done? And they're one of the most outstanding authorities there is. But the other thing I think is, the further you go south, the more the land is expensive. And it's hard, as we know from CDBG grants, rehab, it's hard to find contractors. They are building gorgeous houses, and they don't need to do this. So I loved the thing that Phillips, Phil said about starter homes and land set aside for starter homes. And I think that going forward, that's a really good term to use, because that invokes youth and young people. And, you know, it doesn't have, unfortunately, it doesn't have the tent that's come from workforce housing or even, God forbid, affordable housing. So we need to come up with some new terms. But I think the administration is, for us, it's the huge thing.
Yeah, so Renee, one of the discussion topics we've had in our working group is that should there be, you know, some, would communities be willing to collaborate on a position that would, you know, essentially do some of that housing administration? We've talked about, you know, this whole idea. And this, let me just kind of preface my next comment with this comment. This, you know, our strategy is not only about affordable housing. This is the whole spectrum of housing because it's all related. You know, that you need to have, you know, some of the high-end housing that people want to move into, when they do, it frees up other types of housing that is more affordable to another group. So that's the, our intent is not just to focus on the so-called affordable housing or even subsidized housing. That's one element of this. But my comment, Renee, was that in our group, there is a vehicle that communities can establish an affordable housing trust, which is a way to actually get revenue and then shepherd these projects through. And there was discussion about possibly some type of a regional housing trust that would work in multiple communities. Because it doesn't seem like the, still the demand, even though there, I think there is more demand now. If you look at some of the recent sales data, that the demand isn't there for a full-time position, say in Sheffield or some of the other smaller towns. But regionally, it would, as you said, be able to help with some of this administration.
This is Doug from Windsor. I'd like to talk about the small towns with aging populations as it relates to this issue. One of the things we need to do is, is provide housing for people who cannot, no longer live independently. You know, they, they don't need to go into, you know, assisted living or anything like that, but they want to stay in the communities. And at the same time, many of us on a scale of community basis have been on conversations with BR, you know, the regional trans, regional transit authority about transportation. One of the reasons that a lot of our elder citizens can't stay in their communities is they can't, they, they can't live any longer. So one of the things I would like to ask us to all focus on is developing a plan in communities where you would have some cluster housing for senior citizens who can no longer stay independent in their own homes, but don't need assisted living. And focus on incorporating transportation in as a part of that community. I, I think this is where, you know, the, the regional thing goes in, where you look at elder service and all the other components of it, and make sure that everybody that, at, at the table when we discuss this.
Okay, I think that's, that's a great point. And my earlier comment about not having the right blend of housing, you know, I think that, that's an important element that we need to add in is that type of housing for, you know, our, our senior citizens. So that's a very good comment. Thank you.
Tom, one thing that I would be interested in too is the concept of adaptive reuse of existing structures. As you said, we have a lot of older housing stock. It would be nice, I know in Williamstown we made duplex by right, but it would be nice if we could explore more multi-use or multifamily within existing structures. I think that a lot would allow us to retain the identity of a neighborhood or make transitions more easily. And I think that would result in acceptance of the community, while at the same time increasing density. And also, I think it would also be great just well, for the planet and everything else, that we were able to reuse some of these existing structures. So it's not something I've seen a lot of, but it would be really great if that could be an element, if we could break down some of the barriers to that.
Yeah, I think that's also a very good comment, Dante. And we've, we've noted that, you know, the housing stock is an older housing stock. And, and there does, there is a need for rehab on a lot of those units. But I think with a focus on adaptive reuse, that even, as you said, makes it more acceptable in a community to get greater density, while at the same time not changing the character of the community. Now, in our working group, we did have somewhat of a discussion about is, and I'm gonna use a buzzword, which is always not a great thing to do, but is gentrification of becoming a problem in Berkshire County? And are neighborhoods and areas changing, changing the very nature of what Berkshire County is?
Well, don't, don't you think it's a bubble though with the COVID and everything else? Like there's, there's kind of a bubble happening that will then dissipate?
I think there is a bubble, but I don't, I'm, I'm wondering if there's a longer term change that's going on. You know, this, this actually was brought to my attention before COVID, actually up in, in North Adams, where some of the neighborhoods were, were changing. And they were, what they were doing was, you know, there were speculative developers there buying up properties and then not making it, and then moving out some of the, the people from those affordable, more affordable houses, making it harder.
Couple articles in the New York Times will do that, won't it?
Yeah.
Tom, what Dante was just talking about, the idea of accessory apartments and renovations of sorts. Burlington, Vermont has, I believe, had a program for over a couple of decades where they give loans. Sometimes it's just a problem of finding the money source. They give loans and then those loans are repaid back. And, you know, it's kind of a continuous circle. But they did have an infusion of money to start with. And again, my information here is probably five to seven years old. But everybody was talking about Burlington, Vermont and their accessory apartment, et cetera, program. So I just want to make a note on that.
That's great, Renee. Thank you. And if anybody else has any hot tips on what's worked. Right now, we're just kind of in the, in the stage of this process of framing out the issues. And then we're going to quickly move into, you know, best practices. What, what should we be looking at? And what would work in, in Berkshire County? I think the other part of our effort is, you know, contacting other groups, stakeholder groups, as we call them. And as, as we're having right now, having these types of discussions, what are some of the, the, you know, the barriers, the issues, the concerns that you all have from, you know, the, your perspective?
Tom, to that, to that point, just before it slips my mind, I would suggest the Maggie Walker Community Land Trust in Richmond, Virginia. I think they've done some excellent work in affording, like making affordable housing available through the land trust model. And I, they've done a great job. They'd be worth checking out.
Okay, thank you.
I think, um, I had a question.
Well, Nancy, yeah.
So does any other town have the issue that we have where we're having people come buy up our houses and then turning in them to Airbnbs? So it takes it off the housing for, for people to buy a house and live in as a family when they're using it for weekend or a week Airbnb?
Well, that, that, you bring up a good point, you know, because, and again, with our working group, this is something that, that I raised as a question. And it didn't seem like that was that much of an, of an issue or a problem. But can you talk a little bit more about what you're seeing, Nancy?
Well, we're seeing a lot of our houses, of course, the, because of COVID, the prices have like doubled. So the average person can't buy into it. But we're getting a lot of out-of-state people coming up and buying up the properties and then not selling it, you know, not living in it. Or they're living in it like, you know, weekends or just a weekend, the summer, and then they rent it out the rest of the time. You know, just for vacation rentals, not for, not for a family to live in. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
But we're seeing that a lot in Stockbridge. And I didn't know if any other towns had that issue.
We're seeing a ton of it. It's a, it's a big, it's a big industry that people have found, especially in the vacation areas that buy lakes and areas that are vacation homes. A lot of people I've talked to that I've sold houses to and just generally investors of the, the Airbnb industry has exploded. And in the, they, it's, it's even more lucrative than being a landlord in an apartment building. The amounts of rent they're getting is astronomical. And there's a, you know, big influx. One of the things that, not to tear off too hard to the subject matter, Nancy, but the, you, Tom talked a bit about affordable housing and there's not a lot of investment in affordable housing in apartment complexes. And, and what, as being a landlord and investor and been in business for 30 years, the, the cost of building without the assistance of government for multifamily, brand-new inventory is, is, is not worthwhile to any investor as far as profitability. It's just going to take too many years to recoup. And unless you're in a big city where you're building 200 units, you, you know, I don't know that many of the, most of the developers in the area, there is only a handful that do these redevelopment projects. They're taking and buying dirt cheap, these building structures that nobody else can use in redeveloping them, such as all the churches. And they're getting grant money and they're getting that kind of money to do this work. But we desperately need housing. We're in big trouble right now. We're down to about a 1.5-month absorption rate, which is critical. We've never been that low and it's mostly due to COVID. There is such a dramatic fear in people leaving their cities and coming to the Berkshire for safe haven. And, and the amount of money they're spending is horrific. And I feel very badly for local folks and generations of families that have wanted to have their kids move to the area. They've been completely priced out of the market. So, I mean, Tom, the, the presentation that you've made and all the concerns in regard to affordable housing. I sit on the Mass Landlords Association and I listen all the time, every month, to landlords. You know, most of them are, they own maybe 10 units or less, most. And, you know, that's all older stock. And, and there's been conversation prior to people that called in and were concerned about energy efficiency and stuff like that. I don't think unless you've sat in the shoes of a landlord, especially a small mom and pop landlord, you understand and can appreciate, you know, when a boiler blows in the middle of the night and you have to drop, you know, $6,000 to get a plumber to come, if you can get a plumber to come. I mean, there's so many obstacles, so many obstacles. I don't mean to hog the mic, but just a little.
No, no, but you know, Barb, you, you've highlighted something that we've had discussions about as well in terms of the, you know, the econo, the economy of scale. Is that the, you, you, and what you said, you can't afford to, to build some of these developments, these small developments, especially if there's a requirement that some of the units be affordable. Because we're not building, as you said, the 200, 300, you know, unit projects. And so I think that's, you know, if we get to the, when we get to the point of, you know, recommendations, I think that's something we're going to be advocating for is a, you know, some type of a program, state subsidy program or a program for, you know, smaller communities for smaller development projects. Because it's so, it's so hard now for developers to compete with some of the, the public dollars, unless they are trying to build something on a big project. And we just don't have those. So we're kind of getting shut out, I think.
It would be nice if there was a location that was open to a senior development, which was several hundred units for the affordability of anybody in the Berkshires to be qualified for in a setting that would, you know, wouldn't feel threatened. And I know that's always been an issue of NIMBY. But, you know, if you're 55 or older, or 65 or older, whatever we're calling seniors these days, I am one, so I can talk about it. It's just, you know, if it's 65, God bless us all, you know? I mean, let's, you know, if they did a 200-unit complex in smack in the middle of the Berkshires, it'd be filled tomorrow because there's so many seniors that can't live in their big homes anymore. And they just need, you know, a nice place to move into that's easy to maintain and yet have some transportation. And one last thing, the cost of building. And I don't know if this has to do with embargoes or customs or what heck happened in the last four years, has gone through the roof, through the roof. So that's been an impediment.
I, I want to jump in to, again, this is Doug from Windsor. Windsor's a little tiny town. And the older people, and, you know, I'm 74, so I'm not casting, just not anybody. But the people who've lived here forever don't want to move to some centralized.
I know, I know.
Senior thing. They, they want something local. And in addition to that, you really need, you really need to look at the fact that if, if we can't keep our senior people safe in the community, the community dies. That's, they're, they're the institutional history of our communities. And I think that's something that the small towns really need to be able to work on. And one of the things that I really think that we need to do is start talking about regionalization of resources. Very few small communities can now afford transportation, you know, councilman aging buses. Sheila and I and some others who are involved with BRTA are looking at, is there an alternative that is affordable for transportation for people? Could we cluster these people at some place and then set up a, a transportation system? I mean, I think we have to think, I think we have to think small and big in that way.
I, I think the transportation is huge, especially in an area like ours because we're so far-flung. And if people do want to stay in their community, the idea of being able to get to a doctor or get to the grocery store or go to a play, all of those kinds of things become horrible as, as a, as a technicality. So we need to look at, how do you get people from Windsor to Jacob's Pillow or Tanglewood? Because it's not all just what you need to have, it's what you want to have as part of a full life. So transportation, I think, is huge. I think the other thing that I was thinking is that in Pittsfield, we had all of those huge houses on Wendell Street and Bartlett, which, when downtown changed and the attorneys moved to those big houses to set up, that a lot of those houses were split into apartments. And, and that's one way of kind of repurposing older housing or housing that the purpose has changed somewhat. But I think you also have to look, if you can think about doing that in neighborhoods, for example. And what you see is yards are asphalted over, so there's parking. Or there's a lot of parking on the street, which also changes the nature of it. So there are, there are upsides and downsides to all of that. And I think we have to think around all of those, those possibilities that come into play. But I think Doug's right, transportation is huge as an element of any kind of housing thinking.
I, I echo that, but I also would like to point out, I don't know, I remind my uncle, my stepfather was a country doctor in New England and he used to make house calls. So maybe some of it's also cultural, maybe we, but that's not for us to really change. I mean, I know that we talk a lot about building these centralized housing apartments and we talk about, you know, access. And I know in our town, we, we did a study and thought one area would be very walkable. When, when we did the math, we realized you couldn't walk to a grocery store, a pharmacy, or any other service that one would need other than being able to walk to the main street where all the restaurants were. So I, you know, I, I, I think some of it is for us, but I think we need to draw a circle about what we can solve. Like, how do we, I mean, we're not going to be able to change the culture, but I guess what we're talking about is planning and how that would, that would be affect, affect things. So.
It, it seems to me that, that one time, when you just speak about transportation and Sheila mentioned entertainment and a few other things. You know, 100 years ago, getting around was not an easy thing. Going to the city was a big deal. So smaller communities developed their, their self-serving doctor in town. Every town had either a Grange or an entertainment hall and a meeting hall. It had a big stage, you know, and these things occurred out of necessity. But as we progressed and modernized, we forgot that people that live in rural areas didn't get the benefits of the larger modernization, the public transportation, the factories and, and the jobs. And, and, you know, we relied on being able to get back and forth and not taking into consideration that as we got older, those things were more difficult as families moved away, a lot of. A lot of family units used to stay together and grandma and grandpa could rely on their children or their grandchildren to be able to get them around. That's not as prevalent as it used to be. So th- this is a much larger issue, not to mention, not, not just housing in general. And I agree that we need a much better plan when it comes to affordable living, especially for seniors, because once they reach a certain age, their income is fixed and it doesn't change.
One thing that I would like to say though, that speaks to that is though, I, I am a little reticent about putting all of one type of housing in one area. I think that we would be much better off having it dispersed in aggregate throughout in a, a community to have more diversity of income, rather than sort of just putting every, you know, every income bracket here and here and here, you know, that.
That's fine when you're talking about large communities, but when you're talking about a town where there are 800 people in it, and, and, you know, 350 of them are over 65 years old, looking for a lot of other diversity is tough. Windsor's not opposed to some, some kind of housing that would allow lower income people to, to come in. But, you know, the, the challenge of living out in the country as a lower income person without transportation, you know, you have to have a car, you have to, you know, it, it is, it's a huge challenge.
This, this is Al Blake from Beckett. I'd just like to mention, and I'm enjoying this conversation, that no one has spoken about the entity of villages of the Berkshires, which seems to be, I've been following them and on their, their volunteer list, that that is a, an alternative that the, that our organization could partner with and expand it throughout the Berkshires. They provide not only transportation, but assistance to seniors that'll, that want to stay in their homes, which I think is the majority of the case.
Yeah, what was it called?
Villages of the Berkshires.
Perfect.
They're only in three, they're mostly in South County, they're not in the Berkshires, in the Beckett area. And I think they're in Pittsfield as well, but they're looking to expand, they have federal money. And it's, it seems to be an excellent organ. They have an 800 number that any, any senior can call if they need a ride or if they need services in the house. So Berkshires, our organization can't do it all. So I think partnering with them and maybe other organizations is an alternative.
Well, Al, Al, we were involved with the Villages of the Berkshires. And we did, and, you know, we actually did a project up in North County to see if the villages could, that concept could work up there. So there is, it's a, a, I think it's a very promising model that, you know, it's a collaborative model that, but it doesn't get to necessarily the, the issue of, you know, actually having the, the building or the buildings, the houses itself. That's, that's gets to the point of providing the services maybe. And some of what was, Doug, you were talking about in terms of, you know, making it so that people can live in their community. We're still, we're, we're finding, I think that what Barb said, that, you know, we need units. We've got a, a very small supply that's available. And that's really, we're, we're finding that's starting to be a, a hindrance to other elements in the Berkshires. If we want to do economic development, we need to have a place for people to live. And so, and also, you know, people, you know, young professionals, not just folks who are moving out of the city that have a lot of money, but people who can now telework. You know, we might have a terrific opportunity here is that teleworking is, I think, going to change a lot in the very near future. And it's going to change how we do a lot of things. This is an opportunity for us to help, help repopulate the Berkshires. If we can make it, you know, make it housing available, housing, education, the types of things that young professionals want with a family. And so I, we're at a good opportunity, a good kind of a fulcrum to do that right now. Roger, I think you wanted to say something, is that right? You're muted, Roger. You're muted.
Thank you. Just wanted to say that there are two implications of a lot of the discussion we've had. First of all, it is the, the economies of scale problem of new construction means that it's all the more important to try to get some mileage out of rehabbing existing structures. And all over the country, you know, we have many, many houses that were originally built for families that had six kids or four kids and had through two or three generations living in them. And now that's changed. So that's not going to, that's not going to solve the problem, but it is something that we have to think about. The other thing is that part of the problem, this is, follows up on what Jim Sullivan was saying, is the location of public facilities. And part of the housing problem, the accessibility is, might be attackable by changing the location of things like libraries, even banks, grocery stores. No, no, I, that's the kind of thing that regional planning commissions don't have as much experience in, but it's something to try to explore, I think.
Comment in on Richmond, there were two or three attempts at a local store, grocery store and so forth. They have simply not had the support because almost anyone around here at least can jump into a car or get a ride and go to a supermarket. And so these did not fare well. I think that's going to be a tough thing to do in small towns if the people are not, if they, if they don't have a car themselves, even having one, say, half a mile or a mile away, isn't going to help them unless there's some kind of support to get them to those local stores. And then if that's in place, why not go to a bigger store where there's a, more of a supply?
I would only add that if we succeed in creating a housing that's affordable for seniors, so that more seniors who can't drive can live here and in their existing, maybe in their existing communities, then that will, one hope, have some, some effect in expanding demand for these things. In other words, if we try to solve more than one problem at the same time, we might be able to solve both problems, if we think of them together. But, but, but I, I agree, you know, that's, you know, it's, it's very, very difficult. I think some other facilities, other than grocery stores, might be more, more achievable, but it needs some more research, clearly.
Tom, can I ask a question of the group changing of, you know, all us gray hairs are kind of focused on senior housing and our needs of that. What we're hearing is that, and I, I know I heard one anecdote that was pretty striking to me, of a, a couple, both of them young professionals, you know, 30-ish, both with good jobs, moved to the Berkshires for those jobs, were looked for months for decent rental housing in Berkshire County and ended up only being able to find something and commute from New York State. What do we do about that problem? Because, I mean, here we have folks that you would like to see become part of the community and they cannot find a place that is, you know, the rental housing they saw was either way expensive, like $3,000 plus a month, or was basically slumlord stuff. That's what they found. What do we do about that?
Matt, how did they do after their first tax bill over there?
Pardon?
How did they do after their first tax?
Well, they're renting, so they're not seeing the tax bill directly. You know, it's part of their rent. You know, now, when they pay their income tax, I don't know what they'll do about it, but you know, that's different.
Hey, Nat, this is Al Blake. One of the, one of the ideas, I don't know if anybody's thought about, I was familiar with an organization called We Work, We Live. And my daughter was actually part of it in Washington DC, and I think they have it in New York as well. It's a complex where it has apartments, houses above and office space below where young professionals can both live and, and use space in the bottom area to do their remote business. So I don't know if anybody's looked into that or if that's still a viable opportunity, but it may be worth looking at.
And Nate, it's a, it's a big, big problem with the, with the interest rates so low and the, the combination of COVID and the housing market being bought up. The poor folks that come to this area, young and old, in the rental, the landlords, you know, it's supply and demand. The landlords, you know, back in the days when I, I've had 50% vacancies, I remember those days, and 75% vacancies. There becomes a time with, you know, it's an ebb and a flow where you have a high demand for rentals and the prices just keep going up and up and up because you get what you get. It's an opportunity, but there's no supply being built. There's nothing, you know, in the background saying, and, you know, the stuff that's being built right now in Pittsfield, some, a lot of it is, is income rate, you know, you have to make a certain amount of money to be able to afford. And then they're pretty much pre-sold and they're not always to Berkshire, you know, families that are working families. A lot of times they're folks that are just coming to the Berkshires because they love it here. And it's, 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 it's at really very catastrophic levels, especially General Dynamics, the hospital, those poor folks that come in here, they're at desperate levels right now of, of need. And they are going to New York State. We've, we've had plenty of, you know, they go over to Stevenson, they go over, just over the line because there's more inventory and there's no, you know, more opportunity for, for more reasonable rents. But it is a problem, no doubt about it.
Yeah, Lauren, you wanted to say something, yeah?
And in the partnership with, with, I, I, with one Berkshire, is there any thought about also kind of thinking about some level of sort of marketing to developers and, and being able to sort of bundle opportunities in the communities to get a developer to come in where it might not make sense for a developer to come in for, you know, just one location, but if it was sort of packaging it together and, and marketing it that way? Because, you know, we feel the same things, I think, in all of our communities.
We, we have talked about that, is making developers aware of, you know, the opportunities here and, you know, doing that marketing piece. You know, what that is, we haven't fleshed it out, out the details yet, but that has been something that's, you know, that we've been talking about. I think that, that needs, as, you know, as it's been talked about today is, you can't find even, you know, people, the trade people to do things. It's hard to get, you know, developers too. But I think, you know, we need to do a better job at, at saying, why, this is a good deal. You know, we're, we can be in a, a prime location here and, you know, and we, we tout our, you know, our, our cultural assets and our natural environment. We've got a lot of things going for us. So it seems that, you know, that a developer would want to, uh, work here. And especially now as, that the, the real estate market's so hot. So I think we, we can do a better job at that.
I, it's really interesting to hear because I think that it seems as though, you know, any one of us individually, you know, it's, it's almost impossible to have enough of, you know, have enough return, have enough, you know, just, just enough there to attract the developers. But if we could put together sort of packaged offerings, we could get larger development companies, you know, could even bring in more, you know, jobs, not only trade jobs, but long-term jobs and, and try to somehow band together with some kind of specialization there, in the same way that we might approach, you know, a, a, a different sort of business prospect.
Yeah, I think we've got, you know, a couple of tactics. We also want to talk with the, the financiers, the banks, and making sure that, you know, they are, you know, working with developers on, on the type of packages. So that's another one of the ideas that we've been talking about.
I wonder if.
Really helpful discussion. I mean, I don't know, Mr. Chair, if we want to try to move on.
I was just going to say, Tom, if we could get a last couple of comments, and I know that COVID-19 is a pretty important topic for us to get to, and I want to leave adequate time for Laura to do her thing as well. It might behoove us to continue this to the next month as well and kind of get an update.
We can, you know, if, if folks are interested, you know, as we develop, you know, material, I'm more than glad to, you know, send it out to you all for your thoughts and observations. It's, you know, we're, we're one of the colleagues on this, so it's our plan.
Excellent. It seems to be a very important topic, but it doesn't seem to be, it is a very important topic. And.
Hey Kyle, can you throw on the agenda to, to the tail end of this discussion to put opportunity zones and expanding opportunity zones to help, to Lauren's comment? If we, if we are allowed to allow investors to come into opportunity zones and avoid paying capital gains tax by improving neighborhoods that need help, most areas are concentrating on areas that are on the light side. But if the government and all of us and you, Tom, and your group and Nat want to talk about how do you open up inventory for developers, you're talking about their pocketbook and profits. See if we can talk about expanding opportunity zones, the areas themselves. I think that'd be a, a great opportunity to, like, if I sell a property and I need to reinvest, I mean, that's what it's all about. It's about the bottom line.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Thanks.
Yeah, you're good.
Could you let Laura in?
Laura who? Kat? She's here.
I've been here, Mary.
Thank you, folks. That was a wonderfully robust conversation and I can't wait to get to some more of it next time around. Hi Laura, how are you? Sorry to, sorry to, to keep you delayed a little bit, welcome.
Thank you. No, it's an important topic and I just, I hate being, am I the last thing standing between y'all in the end of this meeting?
Oh, no, we saved that right for, for Tom, so we can be mad at him, so no worries.
Okay, all right. I'll still try to go through fairly quickly, but Tom asked me to come and talk, wanted me to talk about how BRPC has been involved in COVID from the very beginning. And I found when I was trying to put together this presentation today that I don't remember the beginning anymore, it was so long ago. But I'm going to talk a little bit about how it's all gone and then I'm going to talk a little bit more about vaccine distribution because I, I'm going to guess that that's what everybody's really interested in right now. So I'm going to try sharing my screen and you're going to have to give me a couple minutes because I'm going to put this up. But I'm going to try and see all of you. I have a different computer with this, because I like to be able to see my audience, but I'm not going to be able to. All right. All right, so I won't be able to see if you all are bored, so you're going to have to make it obvious in some other way. Oh, there we go. I got it. I just need to stretch you all out so I can see you again. I, I think that Zoom, I think we're all going to do a lot of Zoom meetings. I agree with Tom that, you know, things have changed even after this is all over. But I do have to say, I hate presenting when I can't see the people I'm presenting to. Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about the COVID response. I just have to remember to switch to, to different slides. So the first thing I wanted to talk about is just, I think everybody gets confused about a variety of different organizations that are under the BRPC umbrella related to public health, what they do. I've become essentially the, the face of and the person who is associated with all of these organizations, which makes it that much more difficult for people to keep them straight. So I just wanted to start off and make sure that everybody kind of knew who the players were at BRPC before we get into kind of the bigger picture. So Berkshire County Boards of Health Association, also known as BCBOHA, is, been around for about 90 years. It's an, it was an education and training and kind of networking professional group for the local boards of health. And then after 9/11 and the Anthrax attacks of 2001, when a great deal of emergency preparedness money was made available to local boards of health, but it needed to be on a regional basis, because BCBOHA already existed in Berkshire County, it became the Emergency Preparedness Coalition in Berkshire County and receives the CDC money that goes through the Department of Public Health, now it goes through FERCOG before it gets to us. But they needed a fiscal host and after a couple of years with a different fiscal host, they, BRPC became the fiscal host for BCBOHA, I believe in around 2005, Tom, does that sound about right to you? 2004, maybe?
Yeah, thereabouts. It's been a while. Yeah, thereabouts. It's been a while.
It's been quite a while. I mean, it might have been 2005, 2006, but anyway, quite a while. And so BCBOHA oversees emergency preparedness and response. I act as director of that. BRPC provides all staff to BCBOHA. For purposes of this story, BCBOHA is also the organization that is our vaccine provider. The vaccine provider number is under BCBOHA for historical reasons that we really should change, but for now it works. And then there's the Berkshire Public Health Alliance, which I know all of you have heard about over the years of which, so, oh, I should say, BCBOHA, all 32 municipalities are a member. I like to say whether they like it or not. I've occasionally had towns say, we don't know, belong to your, not many years, but years ago. And I'm like, you don't have a choice. You're a Berkshire County municipality. You belong to BCBOHA. The Berkshire Public Health Alliance, on the other hand, 24 municipalities have signed an intermunicipal agreement with each other and with BRPC as fiscal host that allows but doesn't require them to share public health services. And the members can but don't have to contract for either inspectional services or for public health nursing services. And again, for the purposes of this story, we're really pretty much concentrated on public health nursing. So as we all know, COVID, nobody had ever heard of COVID before December of 2019. It got named COVID-19 because we did first hear about it in 2019. But really, those of us in this country, we kind of knew what was happening. I think we thought it might be another MERS or SARS, that there'd be some bad stuff. People in the cities might get sick. It wasn't going to affect us out here in Berkshire County. But, you know, we started to get prepared because even when we had the Ebola outbreak a couple of years ago, we ended up with some people in isolation and quarantine, well, not isolation, but in quarantine here in Berkshire County when they went to help in Africa and then came back. So we wanted to make the boards of health were prepared. So we started preparing for an isolation and quarantine training. We thought, oh, it'll be great. We'll do it the second week in March. It'll be way in advance of anything we'll ever see here in Berkshire County. We probably won't see any at all, but at least, you know, it gives us an opportunity to get the boards of health together, remind them that they're responsible for isolation and quarantine and and get them trained. And then on Saturday, March 7th, which was a Saturday, as I was sitting in my couch in my living room, I got a phone call from Berkshire Medical Center saying we just had somebody test positive and we have, I think it was about half a dozen other tests out and we have reason to believe that most of them are going to test positive as well. What do we do? Who does this? Who takes care of, from the public health side? They knew what to do from the hospital size, obviously, but from the public health side, they weren't quite sure what happened. And I said, well, tell me which towns. And if it's a town, that first patient happened to come from a town that we did have a public health nursing contract with. So I called the public health nurse and I said, Leslie, get on on the system. Look this guy up. You've got to start doing some case investigation. We didn't really talk about contact tracing, though that's something obviously the public health nurse always has done. But so she immediately got started investigating the case and doing the contact tracing. I don't know who had money on that Berkshire County was going to have the first community spread in Massachusetts. I I certainly didn't. It was a surprise to all of us that we had the first community spread in Massachusetts. I think that is, in retrospect, I think that is probably related to our connection with New York City that had very early community spread. And that's probably that and our rise and fall of cases also mirrored New York much more than it mirrored the rest of Massachusetts in those early stages. So I I think that it's likely how it happened. Almost immediately, we started a very close collaboration with the hospital. They have actually been great throughout this entire thing. They've been good partners. We haven't always agreed on everything, but they have made it as easy as possible for us to protect the community. They gave all the public health nurses in the county, there's only four of them, but they gave them access to their electronic medical records just for the purposes of COVID. They can't look at anything else, but that way they didn't have to wait two days for the infectious disease specialist of the hospital to call them back. They've given us access to test results early on, especially though it's been a problem offline for the entire 10 months. Somebody would get tested, the results back would be in their medical record, but they wouldn't show up in the state system and the public health nurse wouldn't get notified for 24 to 48 hours. And especially in the beginning, we wanted to start that contact, that case investigation and contact tracing immediately. So the hospital started calling Leslie every morning and telling her who was in the system that had tested positive. And then she called the other public health nurses and that allowed them to get a 24 to 48 hour jump on that contact tracing, which I think is one reason why cases stayed low in Berkshire County as long as they did. And we are also, and I'll talk more about this in a minute, collaborating very closely with them on delivering vaccine to the community. So I just want to talk really briefly about Maven. Some of you may have heard of it. This is the Massachusetts Memorial Network. This is an electronic system that is required for all local boards of health. This is how you get notified of about 90 reportable diseases. So COVID is one reportable disease, but there were already about 90. They're public, either contracted public health nurse or an actual public health nurse in theory in every community in Massachusetts that is looking at Maven on a daily basis, seeing what reportable diseases have come in and doing that case investigation. So and it's also important to remember from a public health point of view, we don't really care about the person who's sick. And I don't mean it that way, but we're not concerned with treating the person who's already sick. In public health, what we're concerned with is prevention. So the idea is to find out where did they get this disease so that we can cut off the source of illness? So if it's foodborne or waterborne, they ate in a restaurant, we're going to go and inspect the restaurant and try to figure out, you know, how did that get spread? If it's waterborne, you know, where where might they have gone swimming? If it's tickborne or mosquitoborne, you know, what can we do to to reduce that level of risk to other members of the community? And then certainly if it's something vaccine preventable, we want to make sure that anybody they've been in contact with gets vaccinated if they're not already. So that's always an important distinction between kind of medical care and public health is we're concerned with preventing any further spread of disease, not so much with treating the individual. I'm sorry, somebody ask me a question? Okay.
I think that's background noise, Laura.
Okay. So. So when COVID started, the reason I wanted to tell you about Maven is because when COVID started back in March, Maven had been mandated and it's been required for at least a decade, maybe more. But there were still about 20 municipalities in Massachusetts that just had never bothered to get onto Maven. They didn't see the importance. They didn't have anybody who could do it. Maven's not an easy system. You do have to use it on a regular basis to to be good at it. And four or five of those 20 communities were here in Berkshire County. So we started at a disadvantage in Berkshire County. Then on top of that, in late March, the Porchlight VNA, which was formerly the LEV VNA, very abruptly and suddenly went out of business and dropped the seven towns that they were doing public health nursing for. So here we were in the midst of this brand new thing. It was spreading. Everybody was scared. Contact tracing suddenly became the buzzwords. And we suddenly had, you know, 10 or 11 communities in Berkshire County that had no public health nursing. Fortunately, about that time, we got some emergency funding from DPH. We got some initially and then more was pushed out kind of statewide. And that allowed us to offer to all of those communities that we would cover them till June 30th. And that was just a protective measure to protect Berkshire County. At the time, I think we all thought it would be over by June 30th. It never occurred to me at that point that we would still be talking about this the following January. And so we went from covering 10 municipalities at the start of March 1st to covering 22 just recently. And, you know, all of those communities did ultimately sign contracts with us. As of July 1st, we are now charging them. It was only those first couple of months because we were, you know, really worried about what was happening, that we covered them at no charge. So they all have full public health nursing contracts with us. And Leslie, every time I told her, there was another one, she'd say, are you trying to kill me? So other than the alliance covering the 22 municipalities, there are three other public health, lead public health nurses in the county. Pittsfield has their own, the Community Health Association of Richmond and West Stockbridge has Emily Jarrett covering Richmond and West Stockbridge. And then the Berkshire Visiting Nurse Association out of BHS covers another seven towns. And I think that actually adds up to 33 because we cover Middlefield. So I know everybody wants to know about contact tracing and are we doing contact tracing? I will tell you, well, so let me say, until recently, we were doing all our own contact tracing here in Berkshire County. And we were doing a very good job of it, which was, again, one reason cases stayed low so long here. The Community Tracing Collaborative, some of you have probably heard about this. This is the state's contract with Partners in Health. They've spent an absolutely enormous amount of money on the content, on the Community Tracing Collaborative. It's one of those things, I think I talked to at least part of this group, if not all of you, a few months ago about the the SAFE Act, which would kind of modernize and build the infrastructure for local public health in Massachusetts. This is one of those things that had we had sufficient infrastructure, we might not have needed to spend tens and tens and tens of millions of dollars on the Community Tracing Collaborative. However, now that the Community Tracing Collaborative works, exists, and now that they finally, nine months in, figured out how to make it work pretty well, and now that we have a vaccine and all of our attention needs to be focused on getting as many people vaccinated because that's really the way out of this thing is to get everybody vaccinated. It's the way out is no longer contact tracing. The way out is vaccination. We are now, for the first time, as of the last two or three weeks, turning over the majority of our cases to the CTC to do the contact tracing so that our public health nurses can concentrate on vaccination. And they're still paying attention to the really important cases like schools, long-term care, business clusters and so on. But the the level of cases like community is high enough right now that contact tracing is no longer as effective. It was effective when you'd have three people that had it and you could quickly isolate them and figure out who they'd been exposed to and quarantine them. But the level of cases is really too high for that to be as effective as it was. I want to talk just for a second about Board of Health Enforcement. We talk about public health nursing, but I do want to give some recognition to the health agents and the health inspectors and the the health directors who have been doing yeoman's work for 10 months as well. There are guidelines for every kind of business activity that you can imagine. They change constantly. They are reinterpreted constantly when they are not changed outright. They are issued by multiple state agencies and they are on multiple websites. There is no one place to find these. Local boards of health often hear about these changes at the same time you do. The governor gives a press conference and the local board of health, they issued that morning is now out of date. So to help them, and again, with some of the emergency funding that came through BCBOHA, we have have a point person, that's Sandra Martin, who, that's part of her job is just to be on top of the guidance. And so when a Board of Health agent, particularly our alliance agent, but other agents, get a question that says this business wants to know this, she's the person that has that expertise and can give that answer rather than everybody trying to figure that out. And I don't mean that the other health agents don't know this too, but they may not know it to the the level of minutia that she does. She's also created multiple checklists and guides for the local boards of health, which are available on the BRPC website, which local boards of health have found extremely helpful. And we do a weekly call with all the local boards of health staff. It started with just the staff and directors. It's morphed a little bit. Some boards of health members come now. But it's really an opportunity for them to network with each other and say, hey, I've got this business in my town that says this, what would you guys do in this situation? So that we keep enforcement at least a little bit consistent across the county. And it just gives them a little bit of camaraderie and, you know, networking time. So I've mentioned emergency funding a couple of times. I do want you, the state has provided a large amount of emergency funding. I assume you get that as part of your packet each week. This point, I'm almost lost on how much it's been. That's been a combination of money from state money and CARES Act money. So there's been changing deadlines on when all that money needed to be spent and what it could be spent on. A lot of that was meant to be pushed out to the communities. But in many cases in Berkshire County, I was told by communities that they would prefer we did things centrally and that they didn't, they had CARES Act money and they didn't really have extensive needs related to public health. So we've been able to do a lot of centralized work. A lot of it's gone to, you know, BRPC staff time. A lot of it went to hiring additional nurses because obviously Leslie couldn't do the contact tracing for 22 communities. A lot of it's gone to supplies, personal protective gear that we're providing to all the local boards of health. And then we've done a large public information campaign with money that had to be spent in December. So you may have seen, there's a couple of billboards up about carpooling. There's radio ads that should be running on all the Berkshire radio stations about masking and staying safe. And then we had a lot of signs and so on printed, which are sitting in the BRPC conference room at the moment. But we hope to get out to the boards of health and to the towns in the next week. So these are just some places you can go to get more information. I'm going to show you a little bit of pictures for each one of them, or not for each of them, but there's the the interactive dashboard that the state does every day. That also has a lot of other reporting. If you can't get enough data, that is where to go for it. The Public Health Institute of Western Mass has a dashboard specific to Western Mass, which they divide out by county. It's the state's data, but it's just put in a better format. And then John Hopkins' website is a really good place to go for national and global data. So this daily dashboard, I'm not going to go through it or anything, but if you haven't seen it, this has replaced the daily PDF report that they used to do. This is now an interactive. You can see down on the left-hand column. You can click on cases, testing, hospitalization, deaths. So it's just, this is updated on a daily basis. It's just a lot of information that comes out every day. If you if you're somebody who loves data and loves tables, this is something you want to look at. Then they also do a weekly report. This is where the famous gray, green, yellow, red, when people say my community went red, this is where they're getting it from. I do want to just say really quickly, if your community goes red, it's definitely something to look at, but please be aware of why your community may have gone red. It may be cases in a nursing home, in small communities, a couple of families that got together and everybody in the family sick can cause you to go red. So it's 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 a good indicator, but you want to dig into it and find out why you've gone red. That weekly report also, down in the lower left, gives you a lot of data on clusters. Where are they seeing spread of cases? It gives you some data, some various charts. These are just examples. There's lots of charts in that weekly report, but showing you what the rate per 100,000 is for each region and showing what percentage of contacts were actually reached. This is only the CTC. They don't collect it for the local boards of health who are doing their own, but at least it lets us know how the CDC CTC is doing. This is the Western Mass dashboard that the Public Institute, the Public Health Institute of Western Mass does. The up in the upper left is the Berkshire County dashboard. So they do one for each county. Again, this is just the state's data, but I find this a much easier format to see what's happening in Berkshire County. They give you the little arrows over the last two weeks. Have we gone up? Have we gone down? This would be changed tomorrow. So this is actually a little bit out of date. I think we're actually going down at this point, but over the last two weeks, based on two weeks ago, we were going up. And then they have, again, some nice graphs showing, you know, this is just an example of cases going up over time. And then they take out the Berkshire County towns and show us what color they all are, which I find much easier than going through 351 municipalities, trying to find our 32. Here we can see our 32 just, you know, in a snapshot. So I really suggest going to those sites, you know, periodically, just to get a sense of what's going on. Any questions before I go on to vaccination? Okay. So a couple of weeks ago, we started vaccinating people. The picture here is the Berkshire Community College Field House, which has become our vaccine dispensing site for central Berkshire County. These are responders getting their vaccination. You've probably all seen this graphic because it's been reprinted everywhere. This is the phases. It does change. I'm going to give you the website at some point where you can go and look where it changes. This also makes it look much, much simpler than it is because each one of these priority areas then has to have untold amount of hours spent parsing. Who's a home health worker? Who's who's an? Who's, who's an essential worker that should be in phase two rather than phase three? I mean, it's a whole cottage industry of figuring out who belongs in what phase. And it slowed things down. So I, there's good health equity and there's good public health reasons in a vaccine shortage why we should have priority populations. And I'm not objecting to the work being done, but it's slowing us down, especially out in a place like Berkshire County, where we have limited numbers of people in any category. So, you know, we might be able to do five hundred at a clinic, but we only have two hundred in that category. So we are currently in phase one. We've, the state has opened it up now to anybody in phase one, which includes all healthcare workers. Whether patients are not, term care, which is being done through the federal pharmacy program, we're not doing that locally. First responders, congregate care settings, home health workers. And we were hoping that that would last until maybe the second week in February. It looks like it's going to last longer into February before we get into phase two. Phase two being, of course, you know, the, the snake swallowing the elephant, where we're going to see a big bulge of people who are suddenly eligible.
Laura, can I ask a quick question on that phase one for home healthcare folk?
Yep.
Do you have to have like some kind of a badge or identification? I have a personal private care person taking care of an eighty-five-year-old person. Do they qualify for home healthcare worker?
So at this time, because we are limited who we can vaccinate, we need people to be able to prove what there is. We're, we're being as expansive as we can with any category, but we can't take private people at this time. So if she hires her through an agency, a letter from the agency, a pay stub, anything like that would, would qualify her. But if it's just a private arrangement, at this time, we're not able to do them.
Thank you.
So that first bullet, I probably should have qualified it even more than roughly. That is a very, very rough estimate. I don't know exactly how many employees the hospital's done. I have no idea how many long-term care staff and residents have been done by the federal pharmacy program. I do know that public health, along with the hospital and with our partners, Northern Berkshire EMS and Fairview Hospital and Pittsfield Health Department, have done. Last week, we did more than twenty-five hundred phase one eligible individuals in seven mass vaccination clinics. We probably could have done more, except the first three or four had to be limited to first responders. We did another six hundred today, give or take, between BCC and St. Elizabeth's up in North Adams. And right now, there's like somewhere north of three hundred registrations for a clinic on Saturday that's happening in Great Barrington. I expect that to go up significantly. So we actually think we're going to be done with phase one by the end of next week. With the, with the caveat, which, you know, Barb just mentioned, which is that the home health aides are a really difficult group to reach, and we may have missed some. But they'll stay eligible and we'll continue to, to bring them in as, as possible. But for the other groups, I'm pretty sure we will have gotten them all. And for the home health aides, we will have gotten a good chunk of them. So the real problem is the rest of the state's not going to be anywhere close to done with phase one when we are. So there's a real question of, you know, will Berkshire County be allowed to move on? Somebody said today, you know, North Dakota, places like North Dakota are doing a great job vaccinating the state, because they're small. Well, we're kind of the North Dakota of Massachusetts. You know, we, we're all partnering together, we're all working together, we're getting it done. So we could actually move through the phases much more quickly than the rest of Massachusetts. But it's very unclear that we are or should be allowed to go ahead of the rest of the state. So I, I won't read these, but I wanted you to see all the partners that have been involved in helping with the clinics. This is very, not BRPC, not BCBH A, not the hospital. There have been an enormous number of partners that have made this possible and have made the clinics run. Those are just some pictures from the clinics. Our happy customer up in the upper left, BCC again. The bottom ones are, well, two of them are from St. Elizabeth's and North Adams. The one in the middle is actually registration at Monument, what used to be Monument Valley Middle School, which is now Dubois Middle School down in Great Barrington. So these clinics have all been very successful. But actually, the line you see in the BCC picture is probably about the longest line we've ever had. That was at the very start of the clinic and, you know, people always come early. Though I heard tonight, I wasn't there tonight, but we had been allowing five minutes per person, and that was way too long. We were ending up with, you know, the vaccinators were waiting for customers. So they took it down to three minutes tonight. Apparently that's not long enough. So they, they ended up with lines tonight. So we'll probably have to take it up to four minutes. I'm more showing this to you because you all will someday hopefully fill out one of these registration forms. The state, one reason we're able to do public clinics so extensively and so easily is the state has made this called Prep Mod available to us. It allows people to register, the individual makes their appointment, they upload their insurance information, they indicate any health issues, they get a copy to the vaccine information sheet. And it, more importantly on our, so that's great. It registers and it registers people every four minutes or five minutes or whatever we tell it to, which makes our lives easier. But what makes our lives really easy is it automatically uploads everybody's information at the end of the clinic, both to the Commonwealth Medicine, who does our billing for insurance, well as to the Massachusetts Immunization Information System, which, you know, if we did a five-hour clinic in the past, it probably took ten to fifteen hours to input all the information clerically afterwards. Now we press a button. So this has been a game changer for us. Most people find it very easy to use. We are aware that as we get into the senior population and to some of the low-income populations, that having to do an online registration, even a very user-friendly one, is going to be a barrier. I'm already talking to the councils on aging about whether they would be willing to be kind of hotlines. You know, maybe five or six of them across the county, plus maybe BHS can provide some help through their link line and walk people, people who are just, don't have internet access or who aren't internet savvy enough to do it, to walk them through it. So just moving forward, Berkshire Health Systems, Berkshire County Boards of Health Association and CHP is kind of the three largest vaccine deliverers. They're the two, by far, the two largest providers of medical care across the county. And, you know, we have the twenty-two municipalities that we do public health nursing for and would be expecting to do vaccinations for. We have all agreed to work together and have asked DPH to recognize us as, you know, kind of one entity and to work together in a coordinated manner. And all other vaccine providers, I thought of one today. Fred, I thought of Emily Jarrett has a, has a provider number for vaccines. I need to get her on board. But, you know, there's probably thirty or forty of them in the county. They've all signed on to this plan. The hospital did that, I didn't. So under this model, Berkshire Medical Center would become a depot for vaccine. They would receive all COVID vaccine that came into the county. Right now, we're all getting our own. And then we're trying to figure out who's got what and which clinics we can run and whose vaccine can we use. Under this model, the, the hospital, we get all of it. This is good, because they could get Pfizer or Moderna. We can only get Moderna, because we can't store Pfizer. It allows for one request and one allocation, rather than all of us guessing and doing our own requests. This management and storage can be done by the hospital, who, they're professionals, they're there twenty-four hours a day. They've got state-of-the-art alarms and so on. I mean, we do a good job of managing our vaccine, but we can't compete with the hospital in terms of, you know, just the professionalism that they can bring to that. And it allows vaccines to be deployed where it's needed. So if we got nine hundred doses one week and only did six hundred, then the other three hundred's sitting in our fridge. If it's, or our freezer, if it's all sitting at BMC, they can see, look, there's three hundred doses left and North County needs that, or South County needs that, and they can deploy it as needed. So we expect to continue to do mass public clinics, staffed by Berkshire Health Systems, by public health, by emergency medical services, and by volunteers. Doing it all together allows all of these clinics to use Prep Mod, which is only available to public health. It's not available to healthcare providers. And Prep Mod is much easier for them to use as well. And the CHP mobile van would then deliver vaccine to places where the residents can't easily get to mass clinics. So, you know, senior and low-income housing, congregate care, that kind of place where, you know, it's, it's really bad. We, for the most part, we want people to come to the mass clinics, because that's the most efficient, efficient and effective way of getting vaccine out to a huge number of people. But there are groups that we recognize are going to need vaccine brought to them. And this is a perfect role for CHP and their mobile van. Might be a little bit of hubris in that next bullet, but we really believe that with all the partners, we could deliver fifteen thousand vaccinations a week if we were allowed to move phases and if we were given that much vaccine. And don't forget, it's not just up to the state. The federal government has to make it available to the state, and then the state has to prioritize it based on the needs of the entire state. So it's a little pie in the sky. But if vaccine were no object and the phases were no object, we believe we could do fifteen thousand people a week between the three sites, which would mean, including second doses, we could vaccinate the entire county in three months. So that's not going to happen, but, you know, that would be best-case scenario. The challenges of that are that we need the okay from DPH to, to, to do the depot model. We need permission to move to the next phase as we're ready, not when the rest of the state is ready. And we need a steady supply of vaccine. So I'm just going to give you a few more sources of information, and then I think I'm done. There is now this Berkshire County hotline. The city of Pittsfield has made a phone line available, for which we are very, very grateful. We are changing the recorded message on that at least once a week on Mondays. And if something, like suddenly all the seventy-fives and up are eligible, we will change it then. We're hoping this will cut down on the phone calls we're all getting, which is, how do I get myself on the list? And we all have to say, there is no list, you can't get yourself on the list. So this basically says, you know, where we are in vaccinating. I'm sorry, did I? Nope. Oh, yeah. Sorry. Where we are in vaccinating, you know, which groups are, are eligible, where we planned, what we plan to be doing next week. Right now, it has the phone number for the veterans, for the VA, for veterans, because the VA is doing federal priority groups, not Massachusetts state priority groups. So if you know an elderly veteran, have them call the VA. They are making appointments. We called last week and my dad has an appointment tomorrow. So it's a really good option for people who are veterans and who have a relationship with the VA. So we're, we're hoping that the hotline will cut down on some of the calls. And we'll just give some information, people are desperate for information out there. Another place to direct the public or to go yourself is this webpage at mass.gov for DPH, which is, when can I get the COVID vaccine? The page has gotten a little cluttered now, because every little group that they decide moves up, now they list. But it tells you exactly who's eligible in each phase. If you really want to know more than anybody possibly ever want to know about COVID vaccine in Massachusetts, you go to that other website where there is just everything. And then DPH also does a weekly vaccination report, in addition to the weekly case report that they do that includes, you know, the number of doses that were shipped and administered, number of people vaccinated. They do it by county, they do it by age and race, by ethnicity. And then we start, we have talked with the hospital about, we're going to start giving Larry Parnas at the Berkshire Eagle. He does the roundup column every day. So to start providing some numbers about Berkshire County vaccinations. We haven't quite figured that out and what it is and how we'll get those numbers. But we do plan to do that, because, like I said, people just want information. And, you know, we, we want people to have that information. So that's, that's it. That was probably a little bit longer than I was supposed to go, Tom, I apologize. But I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has them.
Absolutely, no reason to apologize. I appreciate your presentation and you've answered a lot of questions. Does anybody have any questions for Laura? She's willing to field some.
Yeah, this is Al Blake, real quick. I read yesterday, I think, that several of the pharmacies are going to be able to distribute the vaccines. I didn't see that anywhere in your presentation.
Okay, so it's a little bit of a... We are unclear what the role of the pharmacies are going to be in Berkshire County. Like I said, we really feel like we can do five hundred people per site per day. We, I, I'm sorry, a thousand people per site per day. It's efficient, it gets us through large populations. I'm not quite sure what the pharmacies are going to be able to do, and I worry that they're going to get our vaccine. So for me to run a clinic for five hundred people is just as easy as for me to run a clinic for two hundred people. It's literally adding another vaccinator and maybe another hour onto the end of the clinic. It's, it's not... And if, if three thousand doses are going to CVS, I don't see how CVS does more than fifty to seventy people a day. Like, how do they get that many people in there and vaccinate them? I can, not I, but our vaccinators can do fifty people in, you know, an hour. So I feel like it's a good option in places where public health, the hospitals, whomever has decided not to do mass clinics, and where the state has not set up, you know, a Gillette Stadium or a UMass and doing mass clinics for everyone. But in a county where we kind of have a plan and we know how to deliver a lot of vaccine to a lot of people, I worry about them siphoning off some of our supply and not being as efficient at getting it in arms.
Thank you.
That was a great presentation, Laura.
Thank you.
Pete, do you have a question, Pete? We can't, we can't hear you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I got a vaccination this afternoon in North Adams. And that operation was very well-run. And we walked in and was able to go through those districts.
And, and just so people know, Peter did not jump the line. He was allowed to get a vaccination, because he's a council on aging person who goes into people's homes, and they are considered home health workers. So I don't want anybody thinking anybody was jumping any lines here. We are being very careful, people are being asked to show ID, to show proof. We even did that with the first responders, they had to show proof unless they showed up in their uniform, then we trusted them. And I have personally turned away people who, we learned how to make the clinics private. And even with the private links, people are sharing, we send an email, we call people, we tell them not to show up. But I have personally had some very difficult conversations with people in their seventies who are like, but I have a confirmation. And I say, I can't, because as soon as we vaccinate that one person out of line and that gets out, we jeopardize our ability to continue to receive vaccines. And we also jeopardize, you know, at the time, I was like, you're taking a place away from a policeman or a police officer or firefighter, and I can't justify that either. You know, everyone wants to get vaccinated, but we need to go in order. But yes, they, they run a great ship up there. I invite any of you to stop by and see, you know, how they run. You'll have to run the gamut of the police officers and the screeners out front, who are trying to keep you out from jumping the line. But just tell them, you know, you're on the BRPC commission and you want to, want to see how it's run. It's amazing, like, I stand there and, you know, nothing seems busy, nothing seems rushed. And then you realize a hundred people have just been vaccinated while you were standing there. Our limiting factor on space is the observation area. Everyone needs to stay for fifteen minutes following their shot to make sure they don't... There've been, I, I think everyone's seen in the paper, there've been some very rare accounts of allergic reactions. So we're making everyone stay for fifteen minutes. And if you have a history of anaphylaxis, you must stay for thirty minutes. And that's our, kind of our limiting factors. There's only so many, so much room that you can put chairs six feet apart. Only so many chairs you can put six feet apart and, and not run out of room. So we're still figuring, figuring that out. But yeah, no, the, the, the clinics are, the clinic managers have done just an amazing job at those clinics. So Pete, thank you, I will pass that on to the, the folks up at Northern Berkshire EMS and then North Adams Health Department, who have been running those. They've been doing a great job.
Thank you, Laura. Any final questions for Laura? You've been working awful hard for the last few months, I know that.
I can't wait.
You're on your whole department, I've been checking in with time to see how you're holding up.
I'm waiting for it to be over. I keep saying, you know, at least now the end is... I'm waiting for it to be over. I keep saying, you know, at least now the end is in sight. It's not tomorrow. It's not next week, but at least it's in sight now with the vaccine. So.
Yeah, I just want to come, I just want to compliment Laura's efforts, too. I mean, she's really, and, and her team has really put in an enormous amount of time. And I think they've done a terrific job in helping to both to control the spread early on, because it was this whole new community spread that didn't know what to do with yet. And then now with the vaccinations, I think we've got a really good plan. If DPH can go along with this some way, now we could be ahead of the state in terms of getting our folks vaccinated. But she's really working like double time here. So, thank you.
I'm trying to make it be over. But thank you all. I really appreciate the opportunity to come and update you. And feel free to reach out to me if you have other questions.
Thank you, Laura. We appreciate your being here. Thank you.
Good job. Good job.
Bye.
Tom, I think our last item is the executive director's report. Any highlights you'd like to share with us?
I don't necessarily have a highlight with what's written, but I do want to bring a new item. And I, I'm going to encourage you all to pay attention to it. Because it's a new way for the, the Baker-Polito administration to do grants on a number of important grant programs. It's called the Community One Stop For Growth. So what the administration has done is combine the many grant programs, such as Mass Works. There's a couple of new programs that were adopted in the economic bill that Phil mentioned earlier. There's a downtown initiative, Brownfields Site Readiness. And the intent of this program is to, as it says, you know, one stop for growth, is to work with communities from project, concept, to design, to ultimately implementation. And the way I understand it, and this announcement just literally came out today, middle of the day, and I'm still learning more about it, is to direct a community's request to various programs that they have. So you wouldn't be applying for a specific program. You'd be applying to this office, I guess. And then they would figure out where you best fit in with what your need is. So it's a fundamentally different way of how the state is going to be dealing with grants. And I'll get some information out on this. I think it's going to be in our newsletter, which is coming out on Monday. But there are a couple of important webinars coming up. One is going to be on the 28th of January and then February 2nd. So if, if, if someone from your community, you know, a grant writer or whoever does predominantly with the grants, I think it's important to sit in on those webinars.
Thank you.
Any final questions or comments before I look for a final motion? Hearing none. Does anyone want to make a final motion?
A move.
Thank you. In a second.
Second.
Thank you. I'll do this one verbally. All in favor?
Hi.
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 For attending. Thank you for the press to attending. I hope you can disseminate the information that Laura provided. It was, I think, something everybody's been waiting to hear in a concise manner like she presented it.